All this the order. Can we read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please?
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Agarve Township. Notice was delivered that day to the Agarve Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall.
Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Delaparka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi?
Here.
Mrs. Byrd?
Here.
And Mr. Castellano?
Here.
Can we all please stand and salute the flag?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Can I have a motion for minutes, four point one through four point six, please?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Can I have roll call?
Mr. Delaparka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, at this point, we're gonna move into our superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our February meeting, my superintendent's report tonight. Again, we'll review the district learning goals and the things that are happening in the district. We begin with student achievement, and our Lanning County Mock Trial champions just received their award within the last month. That's the first time ever that we are Lanning County Mock Trial champions. So, we'll see more of this. I'm sure Nick's gonna share some information on that as well. Our middle school course selections are taking place, and, um, hold on. Okay, yeah, that's it, alright. I thought the wrong one was loaded. Alright, spelling bees are going on. Our media, high school media specialists, um, shared lessons with our MSA Academy. So, that was pretty impressive, um, in terms of research and presentations. Bi-literacy testing is going on. Indoor guard and indoor percussion both came home with some first-place finishes over the last couple of weekends. Our high school industrial arts teachers went, visited the middle schools, shared their programs. We held a self-esteem, um, program over at Fernwood, which was a great event, and I look to see, look forward to more of that. Scuba diving in the high school pool, and Aviation Day, our first, at Fernwood Avenue Middle School. That was awesome. The outside, the community came in, um, from the different entities, FAA offers, and our community, to share aviation with our students. So, it has taken flight, and I'm so impressed. Climate and culture, Black History Month celebrations, President's Day lessons, Mr. EHT this year, Logan Brown from the high school. With school counseling week was celebrated. Our Spanish classes have created murals for our schools. Our traditional volleyball-a-thon occurred last Friday night. Mommy and daddy dances throughout our elementary schools. Alder musical Frozen is coming up, and the 100th Day of School was celebrated. So, we're way over halfway, um, and this is our, some of our Slade old teachers, so every year participate in the event and always stop in central office to give us a laugh. But, there are only about 25, those young ladies right there. Community partnerships. Valentines were made of, by our students for the troops and sent away, and we riddled training for aviation. Uh, we're looking to sign a partnership to send, um, uh, teachers this summer to get training for aviation education. Our high school jazz band will be performing at the Boat Show. Read Across Americas is, uh, taking place, uh, throughout the next month. I know our administrators will be participating, and some board members always traditionally participate. Uh, parent camp, February 27th, next week, um, at the high school. I encourage you all to come out to learn about embrace, engage, and educate, and always referring, uh, to the importance of pursuing public health series, where the different topics each month, Ms. Santilli facilitates discussion with either students, faculty members, or community members, to help educate the community on vaping, nutrition, HIV, substance abuse, and name of guilt. Okay? And it's now time for visual. Okay, Mr. President, that's superintendent's report for the month of February.
Wow, okay. Excellent, short but sweet. Uh, our next presentation, um, is Mr. Santilli, correct? HIV.
Alright, so as the anti-bullying coordinator for the district, uh, one of our requirements for the anti-bullying law is to present our mid-year report. So, this is that presentation, uh, for the school district and for all our schools. Um, we break it down first with HIB cases. Uh, so first, you can see the total, uh, cases, both combined, um, non-HIB and also confirmed HIV cases, are broken down by school. Uh, left column, the following column is the number of cases combined. Uh, so far mid-year, this time period is from September until December 31st, as required by law. Uh, then you can see the next column in the center is non-HIB cases, cases that were investigation, investigated, however, were determined not to meet all the characteristics or criteria to be a confirmed HIB case. Um, one of the things that we talk about, uh, oftentimes, not just with the board, but also the public, and also educating our students and also our staff, is the fact that just because something is investig, something is investigated and to be determined is non-HIB, doesn't mean that it doesn't follow the code of conduct. So, other consequences may also be administered, and also things that might be, uh, done to help remediate, such as counseling and so on. The confirmed cases are on the right-hand side. You can see, uh, again, that's broken down by school. District totals are here. The total number of cases so far, at this point in the year, we have 11 combined, uh, both HIB and non-HIB. Uh, five non-HIB and six HIB. Comparison for the last three years, I usually try to keep in mind trends, to kinda take a look back at, at where things were in previous years as well. So, you can see that comparison at the bottom. One of the other things, uh, we've done over the last few years, is we started to take a look at grade level analysis, and mainly because we wanted to take a look at where, um, really the student, both victims and offenders, may fall in terms of grade level. Uh, so ultimately, we had 24 total students that were involved, uh, in those 11 cases, and that is both victims and offenders. Uh, so ultimately, uh, what ends up happening is, is that you take a look in the correlation here, it is broken down by grade level. Uh, it's no surprise right now that, you know, something that jumps out to me, and I'm sure all of you on paper, is the fact that we have 10 students involved right now at grade eight, for instance. That would be something that we'd be having conversation, of course, digging a little deeper, uh, is this Alder, is it Fernwood, is it a combination or split between both? And taking a look at who those students are, and not just, uh, the offenders, but also the victims, to make sure that we are making, uh, every effort to meet their needs. So, they don't either offend again, or also we support them, um, in those areas as victims, whether it might be, um, you know, being able to move forward, they have counseling that would take place, uh, as well. Also, yeah, comparisons we have here for the last four years, I kept the last four here, just to kinda get a gauge of total students, um, and cases as well. Uh, the big thing here is that when you take a look at the size of our district and 24 students, um, it really is point three percent of our students that were involved as either an offender or a victim. Very small percentage, um, but still, there's work to be done to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. Activities and trainings, uh, just some of the many things that go on. Um, but school safety team meetings are constantly taking place, um, as well as HIB training for all staff, that's a requirement as well. Um, we had a, a unique circumstance this year. We always have our vice principals come in in the summer for training, um, prior to starting this school year. However, this year, we had a, a joint meeting where we brought our anti-bullying specialists in with our vice principals, and that was led also by our school solicitor, uh, to make sure that we were, everybody was on the same page. And again, that was another training requirement and a unique perspective for this summer. Um, ABS presentations to students and staff, again, the I N R S mentoring programs that are in place. Character education is a big component, uh, for, you know, really promoting that positive, uh, school climate and environment. Uh, I think sometimes also what we've been seeing is, is trends, even though the trends have been staying pretty steady, I think that students oftentimes will report out, and it has a lot to do with our initiatives, will see something, hear something, say something immediately. Um, and that's a big initiative within our district as well. And finally, every hand together pursuing public health, as Dr. Grugio had mentioned, we have the ABSs on there. We're trying to make sure we meet the needs of not just the staff and students, but also the community to educate. And a lot of that partnership is to be able to continue to do that, no matter what the topic is, and in this particular case, one of those was talking with our anti-bullying specialists to make sure that everybody really is truly informed about what bullying is versus a conflict. Because a lot of times, things may be investigated and would be determined to be a conflict, um, where we can then remediate and move forward. Okay? That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, uh, questions, board members, on, uh, HIV before we move forward? Okay. Uh, next, our student representatives. Good to see you both.
It's been a while.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. Uh, we're gonna start now. Uh, I'd like to congratulate the, uh, the high school's indoor color guard for their first place at the WGI regionals in Philadelphia, and I'd like to thank their directors, Frank and Jack Stanton.
Boy's swimming had a great season. They finished nine and one, falling to Cherry Hill East in the South Jersey sectional final. This season, they have broken a total of three-team relay records, and they are heading into the meet of champions on March 29.
Uh, the freshman girls' basketball team ended their season this week with, uh, games against, against Ocean City and Middle Township. On, uh, February the 10th, they suffered their only loss of the season against Ocean City with a final score of 38 to 33.
Congratulations to sophomore Vanessa Knuckles, who was selected to represent the social studies department this June at the hobby youth leadership program. Vanessa hopes to pursue a career in healthcare, and she says she loves to help people and create a positive impact on the lives of others. Last week, high school teachers presented to Alder students to showcase our industrial arts and STEAM programs during Career and Technical Education Month.
And I'd like to congratulate a great job to the high school's science league teams. Uh, EHT placed first in eight out of the nine tested categories.
For the first time in program history, our shot putters attended a throwers-only meet at Cherokee High School. Congrats to senior Michael Carfagno, who came in third place. Uh, he was the only one who, um, placed in the varsity division with a personal record throw of 48 feet and nine inches.
Uh, the girls' swimming team placed second, uh, and the boys placed first in the, uh, team scoring in the C A L swimming team champion meet.
Thank you to all the staff and students who helped with this year's annual volleyball-a-thon. Uh, it was another great year of cra, it was another year of great competition and lots of fun.
Uh, and again, this year, we had, uh, Mr. EHT. We'd like to congratulate our senior Mr. EHT, Mr. Logan Brown, who was crowned, uh, last Thursday, and we'd like to thank the tremendous job for the class council of 2020 and the, uh, class advisor, uh, Mr. Wingler, for the, uh, huge success.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out tonight. Uh, we hope you have a great evening.
Have a nice evening, yes.
Thank you both. It's always great to see you guys. Welcome back. We have the full complement. Great to see you. Um, so in our next segment, um, we're going to take, uh, public comment on agenda items only. Before we do that, though, um, our, uh, Chair of Policy, uh, Ms. Gilbert Floyd, uh, would like to, uh, make a few comments.
Good evening, everyone. So, uh, Mr. President, I, policy 8550, policy in reference to unpaid lunch balances, um, over this last week, I kinda have a few concerns, questions, and I'd just like to pose, um, to the board if we could, uh, pull that policy, I feel like for further review, and I didn't know if that would be something we needed to vote on.
Alright, I think that's fine. If there's, if there's no objection, we will place that on hold, and we will, we will work on that.
And also, we're technically not scheduled for, for a meeting, a committee meeting, but in March, I'd like to, as we said, until we could have a march committee meeting.
Yeah, I'll, um, I'll reach out to the policy committee members, see what date, um, and time would work best for everybody, and the first agenda item that we put on will be policy 8550.
Perfect, very good. So, uh, from that, um, now, this is our first public comment period, so, um, anyone who wishes to come up and address the board and comment on agenda items only, um, you have up to, uh, three minutes. Um, state your name and address for the record. We don't comment on personnel and litigation, and if it's a very complex question, someone might have to get back to you.
Good evening. Kathy Wasson, I'm, um, pleased to see that you put this policy on hold. Uh, after reading through it and speaking to some of our staff, there are some things I'd like to point out, so that you're aware. The glaring thing on this particular policy is that it would be placed on the principal or his designated responsibility to do the, um, calling, the conference in, the following up, and then the final action with the parent. As you know, I mean, I don't represent the, the principals, but they have, they have a hard job.
Yes.
I don't think they need this added on to their, to their roster of, of responsibilities. And the reason I can say that, and I can say that with confidence, is because we have a top-notch staff in the cafeteria. I was, in, in, today, that usually, almost a hundred percent of the money is collected by the end of the year, so that we are not in debt. I know that Hamilton Township tried this, and they, they then went into debt. So, I am saying have the faith in your staff that they do the job and do the job well, and don't mess a good thing up that you have. So, when you're redoing the policy, I want you to keep that in mind. I also want you to keep this in mind. I had lunch duty once. I'm lucky, because lunch duty can be taxing, but anyway, I, when I was in there, I kept saying, what, why is, why is that little boy getting this, and why is this little girl getting that? And I was told, because they owed money, they could only get a cheese sandwich. And I could see their faces, and I can only say to the board, the, the one thing I like about this policy is getting rid of that policy, and allowing children, children to have the food they need, uh, and, and worrying about the, the catching up and the paying of the bill to the parents, but not to shame the children when they're in line and they're told you can't have that. And not that our staff does that, because they don't, and they really handle it very professionally, and even when they're talking to the children, of course, they, they don't talk to the young children, but when they're in middle school and high school, they know how to speak to these students and get their response and just remind them, check your bill, check your bill. Uh, and they do a great job. So, I wanna thank you for pulling that, and I hope that our new, uh, policy will not have the responsibility on the principal, but back to the cafeteria staff where it belongs. Thank you.
Thank, uh, thank you, Ms. Wasson, and I agree, and I wanna thank our staff, I wanna thank Mr. Beck. You do an awesome job, everyone knows that, um, all, all of you, everyone. Um, so, and I, I wanna thank you for your comments. The, the purpose of our policy, as I've been reporting out since December, was to get ahead of a state requirement which is gonna prohibit us from going with that basic, serving that basic meal. That, that's coming down from the state, and we're trying to get ahead of that. But, in terms of the other things, the responsibilities in the collection, I agree with you, we're gonna get all that straightened out and get that right, but that was, that was our purpose. So, we're gonna come together and we're gonna get all the, the details worked out, you know, and, and make sure it's right. So, I'm gonna ask, uh, Mrs. Howke, if I missed anything.
I was just gonna add that right now, the way the policy is actually written, it already does say principal or designate to make those phone calls and contact, so those pieces of the policy are not changing. So, I just wanted to clarify that there's only one line really changing, which has at the end, a meeting with the administration, but the original phone calls in the policy as currently in place now already says the same language, principal or designate, principal or designate. So, that's not a new change.
One question I have with that is, if I was principal, and, um, I am gonna be held responsible in the end, I don't wanna give it to designate, I wanna do the job, if it's gonna be held, if I'm gonna be held responsible. Uh, and I'm not speaking for the principals, I'm just speaking for myself, that if you gave me a job and I'm listed here, and I did assign it to someone, I still would feel like I have to follow up on it. And I don't really see a need to change that. I think that we're running well the way we're running, and I don't, I don't think that means we act.
Thank you. So, I, I think we're good. We're, we're gonna get all those details right, and we're gonna, uh, get to the purpose that, that we, you know, intend. Um, so, our next comments.
Hello?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I see a board member's asking me.
So, I just wanted to say that, um, no, you're fine. I just wanna say, think, I, just one second, I just wanna say, um, I wanna thank Ms. Wasson for her words in reference to, um, our cafeteria staff members, but I just, and I have to say this, because, you know, I've had two children, have two children, and each one of my children were fed while they were in my stomach by the ladies in the cafeteria at Intermediate School and at Alder Avenue Middle School. So, I just want the ladies to know, ladies and gentlemen, to know tonight, that we do have, um, confidence in our staff. We know that you love children, we know that you're not, you know, shaming children, but we just, it's just something we have to just really be mindful, because we're here for children and also for you all, too. We know your value, and we know that you care about these children as if they're your own. So, I just wanna make sure, I think, that you know that the board, I think I can speak for all the board members, that we do feel that way, and we know that, and just that we appreciate the job that you do.
Thank you.
Okay. And I think you guys want an ad for the show, don't you? Come on up, tell us anyway, I wanna hear from you.
Uh, hi, my name is Duncan Bevelacqua.
Hi, I'm Juliana Gonzalez, and we are both currently seniors at the high school and in the spring production of Les Mis. Um, for those of you who know or are familiar for the, with the show, I am playing Fontine.
And I'm playing Monsieur Tenardier. And, uh, yeah, you hit it right on the nose there, we are asking if the board would like to purchase an ad in the playbill.
Yes.
Absolutely. Ford? Alright. See my, uh, person over there with the checkbook? Come on up.
Good evening, I'm Tom Beck, I'm your, I'm your food service director.
Kristin Doherty, uh, Fernwood Middle School, and Association for Cafeteria.
And also our head cook at the Fernwood Middle School.
Yes.
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you for, uh, applauding on the vote. Um, this, this topic is very, very important to us. Uh, secondly, I would like to thank Mrs. Wasson. Mrs. Wasson, thank you so much for reaching out, you know, just, because it really calms down the hundred or so ladies in staff and their families. Um, they, they really do, they, they fight very hard every, every day, and it takes a whole team, it takes you guys, it does take the principals, it takes the association, okay? It takes all you ladies, okay? To the secretaries. There's not one position that's more important than the other. And we were very sensitive to it, okay? Ninety-five percent of my staff are residents of the township, okay? They're all moms, some of them are grandmoms now, okay? They all had children that went, gone through the system. So, we're very sensitive to that fact. Now, we also know that that cheese sandwich business creates a stigma. We get it, okay? So, what we've done is we've added ham sandwiches, tuna fish sandwiches, and we're gonna add another item, we're gonna do a turkey sandwich, to kinda soften up that stigma, I guess, of them, you know, owing money and, and, because it's not really a, well, it's not, it's not a punishment, it's a tool that we use in order to change the, really not the behavior of the children, but of the parents, okay? Because they put the, their own children out front, and, and it's not right, you know? And I can, I can attest to that. So, um, and lastly, um, if it would be okay for you, or at least think about it, is, um, when you reconvene in, in March for the policy meeting, if we could be invited, myself and maybe two or three other of the staff members?
Oh, absolutely, I, I'm surprised that, um, that, that, uh, finance didn't take it up earlier, because we did start talking about this in December, but we'll, absolutely, we will get it right.
Yeah, that way we can partner together and, and do our thing, so.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
This was brought up at the policy committee, I'm also on the finance committee, and I did ask them to refer to the po, to the finance department and to bring you in on it. Um, so, I'm very happy that they took my recommendation.
Well, thank you very much, because I think, again, you know, with this policy comes fiscal challenges, and then together, we can, we can be successful with it, so, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please? Comments on agenda items? Okay. Okay, seeing none, we are going to move to, uh, eight point one transfers for ratification. Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Delaparka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Can I now have a motion for finance items eight point two through eight point one seven? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Delaparka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd? And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, moving to, uh, curriculum. And, uh, let me see, yes, I'm gonna ask for motion for nine point one through nine point one zero, please, on curriculum.
So made.
Any discussion? Any discussion at all? Roll call, please.
Mr. Delaparka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, moving to personnel. Can I have a motion for ten point one through ten point five, please?
So made.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call. If none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delaparka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Do we have anyone to introduce, Dr. Grugio?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. I am pleased to announce after the vote that for the very first time, we have some, in, in public, we have new employees, Agarve Township School District, and I'll begin with Tiffany Imperatris, our part-time talents coordinator, please stand and welcome. Janine Janine Vietro, a para at Davenport Elementary. A paraprofessional at Swift School, Lonique Spellman. And Eve Palladino, our safety specialist. Welcome, everyone. Just make sure you see Ms., Dr. Charlton, just raise your hand. He'll fill you in on welcoming pack and new employee tools and recs. Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome. Congratulations. Now, moving to policy, so the motion will only be on 11.1 through 11.4. Can I have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on policy? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Gilbert, 11.1.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
No to 11.1, and yes to the rest.
Thank you. Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
No to 11.1, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes to all.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Mrs. Anai, may I make a change in my vote, please? No to 11.1, yes to the rest.
Thank you.
Okay, moving now to old business, we need a motion to affirm our HIB, and I will let Ms. Elko read that motion for us.
I would ask the board to affirm the HIB cases as discussed in executive session for the following cases: JDM 02, A 02, F 04, F 05, F 06, F 07, F 08, all 1920. So we need a motion and a second to affirm those HIB cases as discussed in executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion on HIB? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
I'm staying.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Communications, we have an updated board calendar. Do we have a topic for our meeting Thursday?
I'm hopeful that all of you will attend Thursday night Atlantic County School Boards Association meeting at Atlantic City Country Club, but I have not been given a topic, and when I am given that, I'll share it with you. Sorry about that, board members, but I have not heard from Mrs. Huskins from School Boards Association.
Thanks very much. Okay, with that, we're going to open back up for public comment on any topic at all, anything you'd like to comment on or ask us, please, for three minutes. Anyone?
Hi, how are you? My name is Brendan Schur. My daughter goes to Our Lady of Mercy Academy. And I just had a brief question. I don't know if this is the proper venue, I don't know how far up to go, so this is where I'm starting. She attends Our Lady of Mercy Academy, which is 25 miles outside Agarbor Township. She takes a bus from Ridge Avenue, and she gets dropped off at St. Augustine, and then she takes a shuttle. It's $1,700 for me to take, for her to take the bus, and $750 for the shuttle. All the boys who get off at St. Augustine, they get $1,000 dispensation to help pay for their bus. Because my daughter's final destination is four miles outside of it, she gets nothing. So I'm not sure exactly who to address this to, but what I'd like to do is figure out if there's any way to fix this problem, because the young women who go to Omaha are paying full freight, whereas the boys are getting $1,000 off. I'd like to see if there's any way to possibly address that.
So that's one of those complex questions?
Yes.
And so we're going to have you make an appointment with Dr. Gruccio and come in and sit with Ms. Anai, and we'll work that out.
Could I also interject real quick? That's also driven by statute, so...
I understand. I looked up the statute, I'm an attorney, so.
Okay.
I researched the statute today, and I noticed some case law on it, but it's, it's, it's complicated, I recognize that. However, given the fact that her, in her transportation payment, there's two separate sections. One is for the St. Augustine, and the other is for Omaha. And on top of that, they do share a lot of the resources. They're essentially like one school with two campuses. So I'm just hoping it's possible that there's a way to reconcile these, so that the young ladies would treat you the same as the young men. Thank you. May I? I'm sorry, Mr. Vaneen.
There's my cord. Just a minute. Thank you.
Mrs. Byrd?
I would like to request from administration that we get that answer, too, because I'm unfamiliar with this practice, so for me, as a newer board member, I would like to understand it more. Thank you.
Anyone else question or comment on any topic?
Oh, I do, sorry. Is this, did you get done the meeting already?
No, we're, we're just at the end of public comment. We're waiting, we're ready for you.
Lou?
Yes.
Sandra? Myself? And Matt? Afterwards, if you could stay, so we can sign the contract?
Oh, I got the...
And then it can go to print.
Yes.
Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Wasson.
Okay. Before we close, any final comments, board members or administration?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to remind everyone that Read Across America, Davenport School, Monday, March 2nd. If you haven't registered, check your email. I registered, so you have to register by February 24th, so I just wanted to remind everybody, and I'm looking forward to it. I did it last year, and I want to do it again, so I hope to see everybody come out.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to say that I'm glad that we're looking into the policy that we pulled